Yes.
I'll go in, Lisa.
Thank you for asking.
Welcome, everybody. Open the meeting Tuesday, March 10th, 9:00 a.m. Board of Select and asked everyone to please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Mr. Thomo unfortunately won't be with us this morning. There are no selected minutes. I will entertain a motion to acknowledge the month of reports and minutes. There's nothing in there as well.
No, there's nothing. No, all have its announcements.
Generic format, so let me follow that. I am actually sitting here because I am Karen today. So you're gonna have to bear with me so I can take copious minutes. All right, announcements. I always kill his name. Wallen, Mr. Wallen, District 8, Senator Ann Goby will be holding office hours at the Brookfield Town Hall on Wednesday, March 25th from 1:30 to 2:30 p.m. All are welcome. BCM TV announces the Police Building Committee Public Service Announcement now airing on Channel 194 and our YouTube channel. And I believe for people to find out, what is it, Jim? It's Brookfield Community Media?
Correct.
So you just go right to YouTube?
You just pop that into YouTube and it goes right to the main page.
Yeah, because it's really tough to find Brookfield if you Google that. So Brookfield Community Media, you search that on YouTube and you'll find that. And obviously other tapings from the town of Brookfield. With host Bill Simpson Jr. and Brian Humes discussing the details on the construction of the new police station, police building, along with the rendition of what the building would look like. Our second PSA that was produced and videotaped at the BCM TV studio. Anybody who wants to address the board? Yes, sir.
I believe on your agenda, I'm number one.
Do you want public access or do you want to be, have a discussion, be brought into the discussion?
I'd like to be brought into the discussion, I'm number one, please.
Anybody else have any, anybody else who wants to address the board this morning? Item number one, Police Station ADA. I'm disheartened because Mr. Thomo was a leader in this discussion. I think we called this meeting specifically for this discussion.
Yes, that's what we did.
So I think the meeting was to bring back information. Mr. Ackman, do you want to address that?
Sir, I would be pleased with that. In regards to the meeting that took place regarding the police station, and I believe it had to do something with the handicap accessibility, regarding that, I noticed there was some things that were said, and because it was a great length of time when this all started, I just like to say I think there were some things that might have been a little bit incorrect, and I just want to state as much as I can confirm in regards to that because I think it should be taken into account, and I think if anything's gonna be done, I think you should at least hear me out in regards to what I remember best in regards to what was supposed to take place there. So, in regards to a ramp, an access ramp, there was an account set aside for a ramp and access to the rear part of the building, and a door was provided from the outside and then an interior door. At that time, it was a booking room. We converted one of the rooms to a booking room. At the same time, we realized that the booking room was also being used for, it was a multi-use room, and as a booking room only, it really didn't fit what we needed. We had the option of speaking with the owner at the time of the building, Mr. Bordeaux, and using the garage area and converting it to a booking room. And by doing that, one of the issues that was gonna be alleviated was handicap accessibility. We would have the booking area, and we would be able to, any of the functions or services that we would provide to anyone would be able to be done in that room. It would be much easier. So therefore, the ramp when it first started out, there was some issues why the ramp didn't get put in. I heard different things being said. And first of all, the location, there was an issue with the location. Piece of time, there was a tree back there behind the building, and the root system and everything else, the tree would've had to been taken down. The tree's fence has been taken down, but at the time, that was an issue. Also possibly where the building, where it was going along the backside of the building, possibly septic, and if there was ever an expansion of the backside of the building, that could've been a problem. And then the other one would've been, it went around and into where we parked at the time, two vehicles, and snow removal would've been an issue. So it really wasn't a good place or good point to put it at that time. In regards to that, during that time period, like I said, this was all changing, that building was kinda changing year by year for us. As you can tell, it was a residential building that we leased, and we kinda made it into a police station. So when we got to the point that we could use a booking room into the garage, when everything was done, everything from electricity to heating and everything, people came in and the departments that needed to signed off in regards to things being up to code, whether it was the electrical or whatever was done, somebody signed off on everything. At the time, they put in an oversized door, and there was a threshold put in, and I was advised at that time that met for the ability for anyone with the ADA, because we did have two individuals from town that did, not on an everyday basis, but did have to come to the police department, and so we needed that. There was someone that had to come in probably about every three months, and then there was someone that came in at least once a year, and we were able to use that. And like I said, I was told that that fit the criteria, okay? That was up to code, so to speak.
But who?
It was, I believe, one of the, I'm gonna say one of the town departments.
Would've been the building inspector?
You know, I don't recall. I know that at the time, the building inspector was working putting the doors in. I don't remember if he was the building inspector then. I don't, I don't recall.
Yeah, he's been around.
Yeah, I know he's been around. So I assume, you know. So we put that in, and, you know, years had gone on. I mean, we had used it, like I said, individuals that were disabled were able to go over the threshold, there was no issues, no issue had been brought up during that time period that I was there. I was there for chief for approximately 10 years. So in regards to that, after hearing everything that I saw at the last meeting, in regards to a ramp going into where, at least my understanding is where it stated, going back to its original access, wouldn't make any sense, at least if the police department, town is putting one in, the purpose was to serve the town and serve the police department. And the area where it would've gone in is no longer a booking room, and it would make no sense for a ramp to go into that area.
Anyway, think of that, so the old booking room where you'd get processed, like when I got my first pistol permit, you were brought back there because that garage was a garage?
Right.
So the plan was to put the ramp in the back?
Correct.
Now, now for use, Mike doesn't even allow anybody back there because it's confidential.
Right, his records, it's changed, it's changed quite a bit.
So you mean if we put it in the back door, there's like a back door?
There's a back, there's a back exit?
Yeah, and this is where he's talking that he wants it?
Well, that's my understanding.
Yes, okay.
From what I heard, that's the only area that I can see where they, you would put a ramp for anyone to access, and then the purpose of the access was, is for the booking of a person and so forth, but we could still also, the services that are provided, like taking fingerprints or doing, some people need fingerprints for jobs, different things, and they would come to the police department.
So ramp in the back wouldn't even work? A ramp anywhere wouldn't work because all of our booking's done downstairs?
Correct. So that's why when that changed over, and like I said, this was a period of time, and that's why the booking room, as far as I was, as far as I was concerned, everything due diligence was done, and that's why a wider door was put on the front of the booking room. And my understanding was it was a standard threshold. I'm not a, you know, contractor, but like I said, it had been used, and people that had disabilities and wheelchairs had gone in there through there over the years, so not, at any time was there an issue ever made. So if, if the, I don't know how long the department's gonna be, you know, in there much longer, but the point I'm trying to make is that it was to be in there. The individual that rents, Mr. Bordeaux, when I spoke with him, because anytime renovations are done, we always spoke with him, and, you know, we usually had no problem. We went over the plans, he made sure that, you know, everything was acceptable and agreed upon and so forth. And that was one of the things that we were doing, we were changing it to a booking room, so it fit the state, it fit the needs for our booking room and it fit the needs for the ADA. And there was an account set aside for the, for the ramp, and we had people set aside to help out and so forth. But like I said, at the time, we were having a hard time finding the exact location of where the ramp would go because of certain issues, you know, it would make, it's kinda, once it's in, it's kind of a permanent thing. So as far as I'm concerned, like I said, once again, it's the front booking rooms where access needs to be. And to me, if it's a matter of the threshold being lowered, to me that, and it's to the room that it needs to be, it's a moot point going to a room that's no longer being used and hasn't been, that's why it was there. So now for the town to come up and put a ramp to a room that is not being used, I just, it doesn't make sense.
Mr. Bordeaux brought up thanks of the grade as well. I guess in the report, there was grade issues going up to that door.
The, the back door?
No, the front door.
Oh, the, the, which story are you talking about? The booking front door or?
Booking front door.
The grade, as far as the elevation of the?
The grade, I guess it's on more than a 2% slope.
I, I don't recall being?
But that's, that's where all the variance is what we had to come into play.
Yeah, I, I don't recall that. Like I said, when it was done, it was finished, everything was signed off on, you know, when we did the electrical, when we did building, we had the school come out and do some work as far as, they helped out as far as the booking room. So, but like I said, everything was signed off of, and to my knowledge, and that's why Mr. Bordeaux believed that, you know, the accessibility was there, because that's what was related to me, and that's what I had passed on. I didn't, I didn't think to go any further than to call any state entities to find out if what I was told was true or not. You know, like I said, for the 10 years that I was there, it stood and there was no issues and no one brought anything to my attention, so. I just thought that was something, information in regards, I thought that the board, you know, knowledge that they should have when making this decision regarding whether to put a ramp in or whether to make, if they have to, you know, access, any access to me, I would think that if you spoke with the current chief, Chief Blanchard, I think he would also agree with me in regards to the fact that it's going into a room where the accessibility would allow people, the booking room and, you know, anything else that the could.
We never had that discussion because at that meeting, it was agreed upon by four entities that the door would be the issue and what we focused on. Mr. Bordeaux's not willing to do that anymore. But to me, unfortunately, Mr. Ackman, this is all looped because the board voted to put a ramp in, so. I don't know, do you have any questions for Mr. Ackman?
No, Mr. Ackman had called me yesterday on this call.
Yeah, I just, it's unfortunate because Mr. Thomo unfortunately didn't, you know, didn't have as much information as maybe he needed at the time, so that's why I was hoping, obviously he was here and the information I provided might give him a better understanding of, you know, like I said, it took a long time to get where it did, so.
Well, I have a lot better understanding too because I did do, I think I voted too hastily last week, and I've been in contact with town council since then, and she has given a ruling, and also I talked to the building inspector and got some information with him also.
Well, I, I think I said of that ball, right, when I left, I contacted Michelle from K&amp;P. I'm interested, I think we got the same opinions.
Yes, we did.
She forwarded that to you as well. My question is what Jeff has to say.
Well, Jeff said the same thing. He, he thought the accessibility was where he had, you know?
Approved it originally?
Yeah, where he did it originally. And he said to take it right now, he said, and try to get a ramp out there, I guess, I'm not all into all the terms, but he said we would have to have somebody come in and shoot lines.
Well, you needed an engineer.
An engineer to shoot lines. He said that we would have to get an architect in there, and plus, he said, then you know what, we would have to pay for our materials, and he said then you'd have to get somebody, you would have to pay prevailing wage, so he said it would be quite a costly thing to do.
Kind of everything I was talking about there.
Yes, I know.
Just in regards to that, when, like I said, when Mr. Thomo was doing that, that was the booking room.
Yes.
So, you know?
I know, he said he had helped with it.
Right, so that not being the booking room anymore, I can't see why, you know, why it would go there, because the, like I said, it's records and things now, so it's not a room where?
Well, if you watched the meeting, I'm not an advocate for putting a ramp on the building at all, period.
Well.
To be honest with you, the door lowering, if Mr. Bordeaux's not willing to entertain that, I was, I, to me, it almost sounds like you're gonna change your mind when I, I don't believe.
I, I am, I would like to bring up, I'd like to rescind that vote.
But do we want to do that without that?
Well, we've got to do something. I mean, I know we have to bring this back up again at our next meeting.
So my, my, I guess, I guess the discussion right now is, do we, a variance, part of the opinion from town council is exactly what I'm saying, is if we get a variance, we meet our obligations through the lease.
Yes.
And that was my argument last week.
That's the same understanding now that I get from her. She quoted different things, like in the lease, Chapter 10B.
That's what I referenced, and that's what Mr. Bordeaux was referencing.
10B.
But, but the issue is that the variance would have to be approved.
Variance has to be approved, and she also says in here, I mean, it has to be approved with a letter from the landlord, but if he doesn't allow us, then she says we can sign the lease. That's what was in here.
So do we reach out to Mr. Bordeaux again?
Yeah, I think we should probably reach out to Mr. Bordeaux again, and when Karen comes back, we'll have him, or if you wanted to talk to him about this, I'll have Karen send him a letter, because from my understanding, the town council said we should send him a letter of our actions on what we would like to do.
So do we want to take a vote now or do we want to table this until the next meeting?
Well, we've got to get this, Mr. Thomo knew that we were gonna be discussing this at this meeting, so I think I'd like to take a vote now and get this settled, and, because I know it's probably gonna take a while to get a variance, once we fill out all the applications, because I looked at the application, it's quite a lengthy project to do that.
So what do you want your motion to read?
I would like to rescind the vote that we made last week on putting a ramp onto the police station and go along with what we're getting from town council, and also we had gotten a letter here from the Mass Office of Disability, you know, to just ask for a variance.
Could I entertain just one vote at a time? So rescind the ramp vote?
Yeah, rescind the ramp vote.
So you're moving that?
I'm moving that, and I'm asking for a second on it.
You will second? Any discussion?
No.
Do you have a favor?
Aye.
Second motion.
And the second?
Now, before you make this, we have one of two options.
Okay.
Lowering the door, but that brings in the elevation issue, but we can actually, that can be part of the variance application for it, and this is where I'm, you know, last week I was good with the door. Now that we're in this situation, I'd like to take the opinion of the director of the Architectural Access Board and just file for a time variance. And what that would do is, it would have to include a location variance as well. Anybody that needs service that's handicapped would come to a different location, and that location would be this location.
Would you like to make that motion? So you want me to?
I, I regret my emotion from last week, as Mr. Bordeaux claimed it was unprofessional, and when I see him face to face, I'm gonna apologize. And while we're on the apology spree, thinking about that, I owe Ms. Mahoney an apology for my passion and emotions from our last meeting, and I apologize, ma'am. So I will entertain your motion.
Yes, well, I would entertain a motion from?
You'll make it?
Yeah, I'll make it. From our town, we're gonna go by town council opinion, and we are going to contact, will we contact this Mr. Hopkins?
Well, we have to file the variance through?
Yeah, we, we wanna file a variance to the Massachusetts Office of Disability on the present door that we have down there right now.
So you want to do the door route as opposed to the time?
Oh, no, to the time.
So entertain a motion for a time variance?
The time variance.
Slash location. Friendly amendment, location. We need two?
Yeah, we need two.
Time and location?
Time and location.
Architectural Access Board. I will second. Any discussion?
No discussion.
Any no-no in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Does that mean in regards to that, that no access will be provided to the current location of the police department?
What do you mean?
No, if no handicap accessibility is gonna be brought up?
I don't understand.
You're passing over it and just going into the new location, is that what is being done?
I'm not following, I think I am.
Is the door, is the door or anything being done to the?
This discussion though.
Okay, I'm just saying in regards, because like I said, when I saw the meeting, you know, I acted as, to me, as an agent for the town, from the town at the time, and gave Mr. Bordeaux, you know, breakdown of everything that's going on, and that we were under the assumption that the access, or the proper access was there. And I would think after being there as long as we have, in the fact that he was under the assumption because of basically what had, you know, the revamping of the station would have been done, then therefore, I think it's not, I don't want to use the word obligated, but if that's the word, if that's the best choice of words, I think something should be done. It was told him that it had been done, and now the fact that it isn't, at least, at least that's my opinion.
We will have, we'll write him a letter and tell him of our new decision and what we're gonna do, because we have to notify.
Well, Mr. Ackman's making the argument that we should lower the door.
He thinks we should lower the door.
Well, we've, I understand that this has all of a sudden come along, and literally it's been over a decade, but the fact that just because a decade's gone by and now we're leaving there, I, it's kinda like if you rented a place to someone and then they left there with holes in the wall and stuff and said, "Well, you know, whatever, I can get away with it," you know, to do so.
I don't equate this to leaving holes in the wall.
Well, leaving a building not in the way that you advised an individual that owns it, I think the compliance is a big issue, and the fact that it's not being left that way, I think it's a pretty big issue. I think it's actually a much bigger issue than leaving holes in the wall. You're right.
Well, I think we're going down two different paths there. I argue that it's not as big of an issue.
Well, like I said, I just, I think that was one of the things that we had stated in, as, as the agent at the time and the town, that's something that was said verbally to him, and to me, that's as good as anything, any written contract or anything else. A lot of things have been filled out on a handshake, and, you know, he would come over and he was a, you know, he was great to us as far as, you know, we were there and so forth, and I just think leaving it like that, I just, I don't know, that's gonna leave a bad taste in some people's mouths.
So do you want to rescind your motion, Linda, and table this discussion on Mr. Bordeaux's desire? I unfortunately feel that he's not gonna want either.
After seeing, after seeing the meeting, I agree. I don't think he's gonna go for the door, and if you put the door, I mean, it's not gonna, so I'm just, I'm just seeing.
He wants the ramp.
Yeah.
But as town council says, it's really not his decision whether or not.
Well, even at that, it's a moot point. At the time, it was valid, you had passed on, it's not valid anymore to put the ramp there, so.
So what do you want to do about that discussion, Linda?
Now, when you had originally talked to?
Mr. Hopkins?
Mr. Hopkins, and then it was Chris Becker, did you talk to him?
No, Mr. Becker actually came out on site and met with the chief, Mr. Bordeaux and myself, and that's what the report was based on, was that site result.
Yeah, and he had cited here, he said that, that we could go.
All four of us agreed to go the path of lowering that door.
Yeah, lowering the door.
And that's where I'm taken aback, but Mr. Bordeaux not willing to do it anymore.
Well, we should probably lower the door, and that would make it much easier access to get in there.
Oh, absolutely.
It would take away the location variance, so are you rescinding your motion?
Yeah, the location, so, so then the, we wouldn't have to go for the time variance, it would be what, a location?
No, it would be the variance of the door.
It'd be the variance of the door. I'd like to rescind that motion, that we would go for the location of the door. And lowering, lowering that and taking off like that threshold, so it's gone.
Let's take one at a time. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
So I'm entertaining a motion, you're making a motion to?
I'm making a motion to take what, when you met there?
Well, apply, you have to apply for the variance.
We have to apply for the variance, and we will go for the location variance by law rule.
We don't, we don't need a location variance, it's the variance to lower the door to meet the ADA.
Variance, yeah, to meet, variance to meet the ADA recommendations.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else?
I think also, you know, we should get a letter out to Mr. Bordeaux on what we're doing.
Did you want to draft that letter or?
Maybe Karen can, I could still?
She won't be back until Friday, though.
Yeah.
And we want to invite her for Tuesday or?
Next Tuesday.
Do we need to invite her? We'll just move forward here?
I think we should just, I mean, we, we should let him know. I don't know if we should give him, you know, have him come into a meeting and notify him of this?
Well, apparently he wants, so?
Because he said something about 30 days, and we can't do anything within a 30-day period with all the snow where a ramp was concerned.
So I don't think we need a motion for it, but let's let town council handle all legal actions now, so have town council draft a letter.
Yeah, I feel, that's a good idea.
And send to Mr. Bordeaux. I'll call Michelle after this meeting.
And we should just, you know, should probably get together, get another open meeting, or if you wanted to, when Karen gets back, we could even call a, you know, show out meeting, get together and fill out that application for the variance.
Did you want to fill it out?
Well, I looked it over, it's quite a, quite a bit on this that I probably don't understand myself, and with you maybe being a builder, you don't understand it a little more.
I will reach out to Mr. Hopkins, and I'll actually reach out to Representative Barthel and get assistance with that. Any further discussion on item number one?
I don't think there is.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ackman.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Item number two, the fire chief had requested town council's opinion in regards to the 1930 vote. Item number two, the fire chief had requested Town Council's opinion in regards to the nineteen thirty vote. Um, reached out to Attorney Mondazzo. Uh, two highlights in her opinion, which we sent forward to the chief at request. Um, in my opinion, and again, as soon as Attorney Mondazzo, the nineteen thirty town meeting vote did not validly accept the strong chief status. Second, as a result is in my opinion that the town has not properly accepted the strong chief, the strong fire chief statue in it based the existing fire chief as a weak chief. Did you have, did you get those?
Yes, I got the same thing and I, um, I interpreted the same way she does.
You have any discussion on this item?
Well, I thought maybe, I know different times when I was here in the office last week that Mr. Martell had come in and he wanted this, you know, released and we said we wanted to discuss it before we released it. He's not here, I thought he would have been here.
Yeah, he's out here.
Is he?
You want me to get him? No, well, I guess.
Yeah.
Thank you. If he's here, he's gonna request it. Who's gonna make the copy?
We're, we're making it, they can, he's making you a copy of the ruling that we got from Town Council.
I don't know why we're gonna tell Town Council. I couldn't get the copy to work, um...
How about the one I was giving?
What's that? Do you have a copy of it?
No, we can, yeah, I have a copy.
You wanna just give that to him?
Well, we can copy from out here too.
And before you came in Chief, I referenced the, um, might have been, I don't know if that's a common period, but either the second or third sentence in my opinion, the nineteen thirty vote, and then the last sentence as a result in my opinion.
So, so she's invalidating a town meeting vote by her opinion?
What do you mean invalid, the, the board stated that the interpretation of that vote was that the board selectman had the ability to approve, and you can see it, we referenced it in both discussions.
But it says it was voted that sections forty-two, forty-three and forty-four of chapter forty-eight of the general laws be adopted. That was the vote.
But she's saying that she doesn't even, chilling off that even existed back then.
No, she's saying the caveat that the fact that the town put in with selectmen's approval.
That was the article.
Which was right on the town floor, which is...
We don't know that.
Well, we, we do know that because that's what was handed to the town clerk.
Right, what was the motion?
The assumption has to lie in the fact that you, what it was before.
I don't think that assumption can be made. There are three, there are three parts to that process, the article, the motion and the vote. We have the article, we have no idea what the motion was, we have no idea what the discussion was, but we have the vote. That chapter forty-eight, section forty-two was adopted.
Any town meeting, Robert's Rules of Order basically goes right along with the article. Any de, any deviation from that would have to be listed.
Okay, and I don't know if they operate on the Robert's Rules of Order nineteen thirty, we don't know.
I mean, she also states here, it says right, it had said right in that from nineteen thirty, it says subject to the approval of the board of selectmen.
Right, that was the article, we have no idea what the town voted on. And we've all seen where articles get changed on the floor, sometimes drastically.
But nineteen thirty, I mean, you're going back then, it's...
Right, and I'm going by, it was voted that sections forty-two, forty-three and forty-four of chapter forty-eight of the general laws be adopted, that was the town meeting vote.
My, my opinion and Town Council's opinion Chief is that the vote was what you had before you, which gives us the ability to approve.
I agree also with Town Council.
And I, I don't know if Linda means to second, but you have my permission to reach out to Attorney Mondazzo if you have any questions.
You'd like to...
I don't know who, she's counsel campaign.
Right, but she's, she's our HR, part of that contract, the HR contract.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with you reaching out to her if you'd like to.
I don't see why we needed to pay money for Town Council, it seems to be...
We didn't pay.
Oh, okay.
Well, like I said, it was part of...
Even then, it's, it's in English, it's written down what the vote was.
Chief, we paid for it because you asked for an opinion. You specifically asked for Town Council's opinion.
Right.
We got, we got that opinion.
It's been very clear since the start in October. It was voted that what the town vote was, so I, I don't understand why we needed anybody's opinion when it's written right there.
Because you asked for it.
Right, because I was told that I didn't have that authority. And I wanted to confirm what has been not only in writing since nineteen thirty, but has been practiced since nineteen thirty. This board hasn't appointed fire personnel since this vote. There's no record of it anywhere.
I, I, I may go into that, I've never checked into it, I've heard that various boards have appointed fire personnel.
Um, I don't know who the, who those boards were. But when I joined the fire department in nineteen eighty-eight, I did not come before this board, no ash was taken by this board.
I believe Mr. Daxson had made that comment to me, that his...
I'd like to see some documentation, I'd like to see appointment slips. In fact, the, we stopped even doing appointment slips through because the board, a board, a couple of boards ago realized it wasn't under their authority and up until about fifteen, sixteen years ago, members of the department were still electing officers, which had been a common practice based on records next door going back to nineteen thirty. And it didn't go through this office. So as soon as this vote was taken, it seemed they hit the ground running because it was voted that sections forty-two, forty-three and forty-four of chapter forty-eight of the general laws were adopted. So again, without knowing what the motion was, the article to me, it seems, it's a nice reference, but it wasn't, that's, we have no idea what it's voted.
Well, I, I, I'm gonna stand firm with my previous opinions and it's been validated by Town Council, and again, if you'd like to reach out to her.
Okay.
I stand by what Town Council says also.
Okay, I, I, I don't, I don't wanna see how a lawyer can...
Interpret law?
Interpret English language, misinterpret, it says on law, this is, this is, it's written right there, I...
It's written, and that's where I'm, I'm really lost in your argument, it's written right there, that the board selectmen have the right...
In the article, what was the motion? We have no idea what was voted, we have no idea what the motion was, we know what was voted. There are three parts to that legislative process.
So how can you really go by it then if we don't know what the motion actually was and if the, and it didn't say, didn't say the town meeting, it just like stated what the article was?
And that says, it was voted.
Well, she had asked, again, that, these are questions you wanna ask her?
She had that, cause we sent her a copy of that.
Okay, but nobody has the motion. So if this is the only record we have, to me it seems very cut and dry, that at some point during that town meeting in March of nineteen thirty, they took the article, it was changed, either...
That's, that's not cut and dry at all.
No.
I, I, I would argue that and Town Council agrees that that was voted on the board.
Yes, it was voted that sections forty-two, forty-three and forty-four...
That was a learned circle, so if you'd like to discuss that with Michelle, if you have any other...
Yeah, I, I, if I... I don't see the point in discussing it with that lawyer, but let's see. We'll see, hopefully it won't become an issue, I just...
I, I personally don't think it's an issue at all, we, we had...
I was suspended over it, so I think at some point it was an issue.
I think you're not suspended anymore.
No, I realize that, but...
Chief, because you appointed, not only appointed, but reappointed and then reappointed again, an individual that this board had taken off in all capacity.
Right.
That, that's why you were suspended.
Right, but I was under the impression that under nineteen thirty vote, I had the authority to do that. So.
You have anything else?
No. Um, I am curious though, I asked for a copy of this, uh, last Friday, um, well, it wasn't available though.
Because the board had discussed it, yeah?
It was still public document. Okay.
Thank you, sir. Item number three, security camera placement. Um, I don't know if, um, Scott had reached out to you, I apologize, I gave him your home number.
Yeah, he did, he, he had sent me an email this morning.
All right, I'd asked him to break down prices as well. Um, the issue that he had was, and I was incorrect, I thought it was a ten camera system, he said it was an eight camera system.
This is what, yeah, that's what it says right here, so we'll have to take back two of those that we were gonna put in. Because he told me if we went with ten cameras, then that would put us into a, a whole different system and he said it would then be an increase in money.
Well, not only that, he's also recommending not to place cameras in the offices like you and Mr. Thummel wanted to.
Okay, yeah, so we'd have to have that rescinded and we'd go back to taking the one out of this office and probably the one out of the Town Council.
I'm gonna make the argument that we don't put them in anybody's office except, and just follow the original plan.
Well, weren't we gonna put one out here in the main office?
Yeah, well, that's the original plan.
Yeah, the original plan is a little bit...
Well, Mr. Thummel brought up the idea of putting one in here, one in the treasurer's office, one in the accountant's office. I, I haven't changed my mind, I'm still of the belief that we don't need them.
No, well, after hearing, after talking to, um, Mr. Mansfield this morning too, um...
Oh, you talked to him this morning?
Yeah, he called me up, he called me this morning and he sent me the email here this morning about it. And he said that, uh, we only have eight, uh, the system will now only run eight cameras and he said that we would have to have an expandable system if we wanted to go with more.
Well, I think the system is expandable, but it just, there's a cost for including new...
Yeah, that's what he said, there's a cost along with it.
All right, so are you good, I don't think we took a vote on it last time, I don't think we need to take a vote on it.
No, I'm good with the eight.
Are you good with the original plan?
Yes, I'm good with the original plan after talking with him this morning.
I'm pointing to the, what, is that the plan right there, the fold, that rolled up paper within the last... That puts two cameras in the hallway.
Two.
Two cameras in the front.
Yeah, two, two over here.
One, that, one in the hallway out here.
One out in the hallway.
One in the office facing the mailboxes.
Facing the mailboxes.
And then one downstairs facing...
One downstairs.
Facing the door, so original plan, you good with?
Yes, I'm good with the original plan after talking to him this morning.
All right, um, through that discussion as well, I talked to him yesterday, he's, um, I requested for him to get some information on smoke detectors for the building, he had reached out to the fire chief. And the fire chief's requesting, um, engineered documents, which he's in every right, what it does is it just, you know, takes the liability off of him and I don't blame him at all for that.
Oh, no, no, cause I had talked, Scott was in here one day last week and I had also talked to him about, um, smoke detectors also.
So he had mentioned that there's a gentleman that he knows that might be able to get us that engineered stamp?
Yes, that's what he had said.
All right, at, at a cheaper cost, they're, they're very expensive. So that's gonna be a work in progress, but while they're here, I'd like to get that because it just opens up the door for a lot different things.
Yeah, because if they're gonna be doing all this wiring, the wiring will be all exposed anyway, so they might as well put in smoke.
It protects this building.
It does, it protects the building, cause we don't have any, and maybe that will even help us on insurance.
That's where I was going, cause Maya wouldn't write us because of the lack of smokes. All right, so that's gonna be moving target, maybe he'll have information by next meeting. Any further discussion on that?
No.
Did you want this, there's no phone to call. You want to go to the camera, I never got a copy of it. Uh, item number four. Uh, there's a request for special use permit for July twelfth from the Classic Bass Anglers, Quabot. Uh, it's a bass tournament, the cars estimated will be eight, estimated boats will be eight, arrival time at six AM. And it'll go from seven AM to three PM. I'll entertain a motion to approve?
I'll second that motion.
I'll entertain it.
Oh, okay, well, I'll, I'll make that motion.
I will second, any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, no in favor?
Aye.
Should've paid more attention to typing, also, two finger pecker. Gets the job done all right.
That's right.
Item number five, email website changeover. Um, Mr. Heller brought to my attention that Mr. George, um, requested access, email, um, passwords and whatnot, uh, so he can start taking over. Um, we did talk at the last meeting, that's a four hundred dollar charge, uh, so he can get it. He's talking about keeping the system that we have and bringing the email capacity to it.
Yes, you mean Mr., what was his last name, Mr. George?
George, yeah.
Yes, yeah, we did have discussed that.
Um, he'll need the usernames and passwords. Um, it's gonna take about one or two weeks to estimate the budget.
Okay.
We talked about one of those moving targets for the budget as well. So I'll entertain a motion to, do you guys have any comments on that, I thought I saw you.
Yes.
Okay.
Karen Mahoney, uh, Cable Access Committee, not the chair. Um, I just happened to be here and I talked to Rudy Heller last night, not about this originally, I just went to his place to pick up the gear. And he mentioned the changeover because we've, as a committee, have been working on it. And he said that the, um, that Mr. George, I think his name is, had wanted the emails and passwords so that he could formulate a bid or an, an estimate, not so he could take it over. And Rudy told me that he had sent you an email saying that he was uncomfortable with surrendering those passwords upfront, just to get a bid.
Well, it, it's not the bid, um, and that's the text I was referencing, it was yesterday and the day before yesterday, so Rudy and I have been going back and forth a couple of days. Um, it's not the bid, but he is gonna get us a bid, but this is to change things over to the town hall because we're gonna start...
Oh, I know, I know the purpose of it and, and the committee is all for this, just to go on the record about that. But Rudy told me he was uncomfortable... But Rudy told me he was uncomfortable with surrendering that information prior to getting a bid, and he didn't see why that information was necessary to get a bid, and that he had conveyed that concern to you.
Yeah, and that's where the confusion was, is not to get the bid, it's to start the process of moving it back over.
But he's, if he's not gonna bid, so you're not, you don't know upfront how much this is gonna cost?
It's gonna cost us four hundred dollars to get everything back into house.
So you did have a bid on this?
Which we discussed last week.
Okay, good. I wanted to clear my mind because Rudy gave me the opposite impression, and I wanted to be sure that I knew what was going on since I was here.
But he's gonna give us a better bid to do more with what we have.
I see, so this is for an initial changeover?
Changeover for the process.
And then he's going to give you a bid for increased services, possibly?
Possibly, yeah.
Possibly, okay, great.
Whatever his recommendations are.
Okay, great. And, um, if you could just keep the committee, through James, apprised of that so that once the process is on its way, and we have some sort of a progress report for our own records, that would be great.
Cable access.
Uh-huh, and, yeah, through James.
We usually discuss it every month anyways.
Well, Mr. George was the one that did my town government.
Uh-huh.
And he also does this for the town of Barry.
He's the one who set my town government?
Yes.
That's a great system.
That's him, yes. And he, and the town that he did give those to, that was, you know, he donated his time, and there was no cost involved with that.
That's important information. I'm glad you said that on camera because it's, uh...
And so he's the one I had suggested to Karen when, um, we were talking about, I said, why don't you call? I didn't know who he was, what his name was, but I suggested to Karen to call the town clerk up there, and she did, and she told her who it was. So Karen has been in contact with him.
Well, obviously, since he's, he's cognizant of how towns work.
Yes.
And he's obviously comfortable with coding and, and, um, the computers in general. I, it's a great choice.
Yes, and then, and then also, he is going to, the one that's gonna help maintain the website is the clerk that works for Karen, and, um...
Karen?
We have a clerk that works for Karen.
Oh, here?
Yes, here.
Okay.
And she, and, and, and Mr. George is gonna train her, and she's the one that will keep the update on, on the website.
We had, we had known about that part of it, but...
Yeah.
So this is how it all fits together then?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I'll entertain a motion to allow all passwords and all requested information to be granted to Mr. George.
I'll make that motion.
That was second. Any discussion?
As long as the cable committee, you're all happy about that?
Yeah, we are.
Yeah.
Gonna take a little off there.
Okay, you all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, um, this is just part, actually, if you want to give me that quote back, Linda? From Scott?
Oh.
We receive the, um, the monitoring fee of two hundred fifty, two hundred and forty dollars per year, and the first three months are free.
Yes.
So we can include that, and we can include these prices into our budget. Any discussion on that?
No, no discussion.
Alright, correspondence. I'll actually take this in later. I'll just read them off. Charter has sent notice that there will be four... Just checking selfishly to see if they affect me. Um, four channel changes. Um, the OWN network, Turner Classic Movies, True TV, and Cartoon Network. What, uh, lineup changes. And you can view those changes at charter.com backslash channel lineup. Uh, Mass DOT has sent a report in regards to mandated bridge inspections. They have found two issues, one with Dunbrook and one with Rice Pond Outlet. Uh, there is a report, it was sent to, looks like this office, I'm assuming it's addressed to Mr. Chafee. That copy has been sent to him. I'm actually gonna keep this out after we meet. I'll see if Cindy has that. Have you had a chance to look at that?
No, I haven't.
Um, did you want to look at it before?
Yes, I'd like to.
Um, Senator Gobi's office has advised the board of selectmen that the governor's budget has been released. A lot of people have been watching, basically half a dozen bullet points. Uh, it includes thirty-four million dollars increase, a three point six percent to unrestricted local aid. Uh, one, one hundred and five point three million increase to chapter seventy funding. Uh, phasing in of the earned income credit of up to thirty percent, which will phase out in time the film tax credit. Funding locally by seventy-five percent of revenue growth, which would be a three point six increase. And increasing transportation spending by twenty percent, which includes one hundred eighty-seven million. Unfortunately, up fifty-six, but a lot of it goes to MBTA. Early retirement incentive program to responsible, responsibly reduced administrative spending. Um, obviously, those are all moving targets. It is the governor's budget. Two other budgets will come out. Um, I noticed that National Grid will be doing vegetation maintenance along the power grid. They have to notify the town of Brookfield. Uh, be conducted between the dates of April first and March thirty-first, and that'll be the power lines that run, what is it, the Southern Power Brookfield? Um, there's also a notice. Also a notice from CSX Transportation for Vegetation Management. Um, they stated that they, in the correspondence, there's a timeframe, there is no timeframe. But for anybody that's interested, um, you can email, it's a Steven H E R Z O G. And his webs, his email address is Steven, S T E P H E N dot H E R Z O G at A M E C F W dot com. He's the project manager for A M E C Foster Wheeler. Any other issues before the board?
No, I don't think there is.
Hearing none in favor of, no, no favor. I'm jumping ahead of myself. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I will second. Any discussion?
No discussion.
Hearing none in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you, everyone.